Alright, cool. So, hey, how's it going? I'm Red, athlete over on the TryHackMe server, Twitter, yada, yada. And this is just another chill session where I'm gonna be doing a little bit of studying. Just gonna read through some of the material here and hopefully we'll learn something together. If I don't exactly know what I'm doing, be patient with me because this is just a chill study. If you have any questions, feel free to go ahead and ask if you have any recommendations. Again, go ahead and let me know. So, let's get it started here. Alright, so what am I doing? I am doing phishing. Learn what phishing is and why it's important to read to a red team engagement. You will set up a phishing infrastructure, write a convincing phishing email, and try to trick your target into opening your email in a real world simulation. Alright, so this sounds like it's gonna be really tough. There's ten tasks here. I'm here all night. It's not gonna be one of those fifteen minute, you know, walkthroughs, speed, get all your points or whatever. My goal here is to learn. Hopefully, we'll learn together. Alright, so we'll learn what phishing is, how it's performed, some valuable tools, and why it's an essential part of the red team engagement. Intro to Phishing. Whoop, whoop. Gotta correct the answer. So, intro to phishing attacks. Oh, boy, there's a lot to read. Let me see if I can guess the answers and then we'll go back and read. What type of psychological manipulation is phishing part of? It's gonna be social engineering, I'm assuming. What type of phishing campaign do red teams get involved in? Phishing campaigns that red teams get involved in? Now, there's something I don't know. So, let's go ahead and find out. So, it's gonna be spear phishing. Why would it be spear phishing? It's probably because we're gonna be going for specific credentials, specific access. We don't necessarily want just whoever, wherever. We're gonna want either somebody within a specific organization or we're gonna want somebody with a specific level of access. Let's see what they tell us. A term you'll come across and a type of phishing campaign a red team would participate in is spear phishing. As with throwing a physical spear, how many of you have thrown a physical spear? I have not. You'd have to have a target to aim at. The same can be said with spear phishing in that you're targeting individual business organization rather than just anybody as mass. This is an effective form of phishing for a red team engagement. As they are bespoke to the target, it makes them hard to detect by technologies such as spam filters, antivirus, and firewalls. Good to know, good to know. Alright. So, here we are, we're leveling up, we're doing our thing. Let's see. Give an example here. The attacker locates a physical location of the target business. The attacker then looks for nearby food suppliers and discovers a company called Ultimate Cookies. Alright, you got me already. The attacker registers the domain ultimatecookies.thm. The attacker then crafts an email to their target, tempting them with an offer of receiving some free cookies if they sign up to the website. Because the victim has heard of this local company, they're more likely to trust it. The victim then follows the link to the email to the fake website created by the attacker and registers online. To keep things simple, the victim uses the same password for all their online accounts, of course. The attacker now has the victim's email address and password to log into the victim's computer or company email account. The attacker could now have access to the private company information and also have somewhere to launch another phishing attack against other employees. Cool. So, do some research here. Find out that the Acme support is near these cookie people. Register domain. I love registering domains. Honestly, I feel kind of addicted to it. Okay, cool. So, you go ahead, send an email. Boom, they give you their creds and now you go to the Acme site and you are set. Alright, cool. All good information. So, let's see here. What do we need to know now? We completed that, so let's go ahead and write convincing phishing emails. Alright. Let's see if we know the answer. If we know the answer, we'll, I don't know, maybe we'll press forward and maybe we'll go back. What tactic can be used to find brands or people a victim interacts with? My guess is gonna be OSN. Perfect. And what should be changed on an HTML anchor tag to disguise a link? Ah, man. I think it's whatever the hover, like the description or something like link descriptions. It's like... Ah, man. It's been so long since I've done any of that on my own. Anchor text. Alright, so let's go take a look at the references that they've got here. I'm looking at keyboards. Anchor text. Alright, so where'd you go? So, not, well, maybe that, is that what they're talking about? A hyper F? That doesn't seem quite right. So, if we wanted to change the terminology, let's go to terminology. Anchor text is weighted ranked in algorithms, generic. Branded, partial match. No, that can't be it. Okay. So, we have three things to work with in regards to phishing emails. The sender's email address, the subject and the content. The sender's address usually, or excuse me, ideally, the sender's address would be from a domain, the domain name that spoofs a significant brand, no contact or coworker. See the choosing a phishing domain task below for more information. Find what brands or people a victim interacts with. They can use OSN, for example. Observe the social media, searching Google for the victim's name. So, like me, if you want, you know, you wanted to do some OSN, you would've just seen that I was looking at keyboards. Looking at the victim's business. Website to find suppliers, looking at LinkedIn to find coworkers with the victim. The subject, you should set the subject to something quite urgent, worrying, or piques the victim's curiosity so they don't ignore it and act on it quickly. Your account has been compromised, your package has been dispatched or shipped. Staff payroll information, or your photos have been published. A big one was like leaked promotion material. So, that way people will know whether they got promoted or not. That was a big one. Alright, and the content. If impersonating a brand supplier, it would be pertinent to research your standard email templates and branding and make your content look like theirs. So, if you set up a spoof website to harvest data or distribute mail, the links should be disguised using the anchor text and changing it. Oh, that's... Is that literally what they're looking for? They're looking for the word anchor text? No. Yes? It's tough sometimes to figure out what exactly they're looking for. Oh, my gosh. Alright, well, we did it. So, got ourselves another anchor. Excuse me, another coin in our coffers. We're a little went up. Alright, task four. Phishing infrastructure. Certain amount of infrastructure will need to be in place to launch a successful phishing campaign. Domain name, SSL, email, DNS records, web server, analytics. This is good. So, the analytics can help you figure out, well, keep track of emails that have been sent, opened, clicked, combined with information from your phishing websites for which users have supplied personal information, IP addresses. You can get all kinds of stuff. When doing a red team engagement, like a phishing campaign, managers are curious to see if they're, what information you're able to find when people are clicking on these links. So, alright, so animation, automation and useful software. GoFish. Open source phishing framework. Alright, get gofish.com. Do it. So, we'll create a new folder. We'll call it Phishing. See if I can move that. Alright, I'll adjust that at a later time. Alright, we'll keep that there. Damn, that's a whole thing, isn't it? Launch a campaign in three steps, bro. That's crazy. Alright, and, oh, and set. So, I've used a social engineering toolkit. Just a sec. Wonder if it, is it installed here on Parrot? I don't know. Alright, GoFish is a web-based framework to make setting up phishing campaigns more straightforward. GoFish allows you to store your SMTP server settings for sending emails as a wide-based, or excuse me, web-based tool for creating email templates using a simple, what you see is what you get editor. You can also schedule when emails are sent and have an analytics dashboard that shows how many emails have been sent, opened or clicked. The next task will talk you through how to launch a phishing campaign using the software. Also, we'll be using that. That's pretty dope. Alright, and then social engineering toolkit. The social engineering toolkit contains a multitude of tools, but most of them, some of the most important ones for phishing are the ability to create spear phishing attacks and employ fake versions of common websites to trick victims into entering their credentials. So, what part of a red team infrastructure can make a website look more authentic? SSL. TLS certificate, probably. What was it that was up here? Certificates. Alright, what protocol has text records that can improve email deliverability? SMP? DNS? What are we doing here? What protocol? Text records. Oh, yeah. Text records, DNS. Alright, what tool can automate a phishing campaign include analytics? And that was that GoFish, right? Alright, nice. So, we are doing real good here with this. When we're using GoFish, I'm really excited about this. I've never used this before and the fact that they brought it on for this TryHackMe thing is pretty sweet. Did I click the button? Yes, I clicked the button fifteen minutes ago so that way I would be able to quickly start our little dealiebob here. I'm no longer doing password attacks, so let's see. Make a directory for this page. It's called PhishingYL. And this task will take you through setting up GoFish, sending a phishing campaign, capturing user credentials from a spoof of a website. We're doing it live. Alright. First, launch a virtual machine by clicking the green Start Machine button on the right. Did that. Click the following URL to open the GoFish page. Alright. If you receive an error, wait thirty seconds. Alright, here I am. Cool. Should be able to log in with admin at HackMe. Alright, sending profiles. Are the connection details required? You actually send it to your phishing emails. So, let's go there. This is just simply an SMTP server that you have access to. Click the sending profiles link on the left-hand menu and then click the new profile button. Cool, we can do that. Next, add the following information as per the screenshot below. So, they want us to add local server, no reply, redteam.thm and a host. Cool. Cool. No reply at redteam.thm. And the host is 127.0.0.1.425. Great. Then click Save Profile. Alright, landing pages. Next, we're gonna set up the landing pages, the website that the phishing email is gonna direct the victim to. This page is usually a spoof of a website the victim is familiar with. Click the landing pages link on the left-hand menu and then click the new page button. Okay. Give the landing page a name, Acme Login. Acme Login. Alright. Next, HTMLX. Okay. We'll need to press the Source button. Okay. And we can enter this whole page here. Alright, click the Source button again and you will see what they see. Oh, did it go away? I'm gonna copy this source. There we go. Much better. Alright, cool. Also, click the capture submitted data because we want that and we want the passwords. Credentials are not encrypted means that captured passwords are stored in a base as clear text. Be careful. Alright, cool. And we'll probably want to save page. And we do. Alright, email template. This is design and content of the email you're gonna actually send to the victim. You will need to be persuasive and contain a link to your landing page to enable us to capture the victim's username and password. Click the email templates button on the left-hand side and then click the new template. Give the template the name email1 and the subject of new email received or new message received. Then click the HTML tab and then probably go to the Source button. Alright, it's already there. And the contents are a persuasive email that would convince the user to click the link. And the link text will need to be set to this. Okay. Damn it, this is definitely gonna be a Rick roll. Alright, this is a dumb Rick roll. Cool. Excuse me. My apologies. I, I guess I got a little bit of a thidere dealiebob. Alright, so this is where we're gonna want it to go. The actual link will be need, will need to be set to URL. We'll get changed to the spoofed landing page. Alright, cool. Alright, so email message. So, we'll just change it to what these people said. Hello. You've been, you've received a new message. Please log in to the admin portal to view it. And then there's that. Many thanks, online team. Glad there's an online team. Alright. And we'll change this to our page. Link, link, link. There we go. URL. Alright. Set that to other. Alright. Click it and stick it. Oh, we needed to add a tracking image too. So, let's go back here. Oh, yeah, tracking image is there. Great. Cool. This is where we can store the email address of our targets. So, we're gonna add this group, call the group name Targets. And we'll start adding. Can I do a bulk? Nah, I can't bulk. Alright. Brian, oh goodness, why didn't I just? Alright. Acmeitsupport.thm. And then hack counts. Oh, man. Acmeitsupport. Okay, so I probably have a typo that I need to correct for the other guys. So, I'm gonna do that now. Martin. And then Brian. Great. Acmeitsupport. Click Save Button. Should look like the screenshot below. Great. Campaigns. Alright, what campaigns are they talking about here? Now's time to send your first emails. Click the Campaigns link on the left-hand side and click the New Campaigns button. Set the following values for the inputs as per the screenshot below. Campaña uno. Email one. Email one, Acme Login. The URL is HTTP. This is that dynamic IP address that we've been given. For this lab set it to two days ago. Make sure there's no complications. Alright. Oh, my gosh. I'm having so many troubles. This is go to today. Select time. Select now. Every second. Cool. Sending profile, local server groups, targets. Don't have to do anything else. Let's launch campaign. Are you sure? Campaign has been scheduled. This campaign has been scheduled for launch. Alright, so should have been run two days ago. Looks like we already have two emails sent. We were directed to the results page of the campaign. The results page gives us an idea how the phishing campaign is performed by letting us know how many emails have been delivered, opened, clicked, and how many users submitted data to our spoof website. So, we have two emails sent. Got an error on accounts like expected. Both these again. We can dig into the error more by clicking on our dropdown menu. Error sending email, view details, should be an ingest rejected, user unknown in local recipient table. Okay. After a minute of providing, leaving, you followed instructions correctly, you should see the status. Brian changed your submitted data. Alright, expanding Brian's details and then viewing the submitted data. You should see Brian's username and password, which will help you answer the question below. Alright, got it. Thank you very much, Brian. You're a good, good fella. Let's see these credentials, password. Brian. Alright. Dope. Let's go ahead and provide some submission. Alright, nice. Droppers. Droppers are software that phishing victims tend to be tricked into downloading and running on system. The dropper may advertise itself as something useful or legitimate, such as a codec to view certain videos, software, open, specific file. Droppers are not usually malicious themselves, so they tend to pass antivirus checks. Once installed, they intend to malwareize you there. In fact, we're downloading from a server and installing on the victim's computer. The malicious software usually connects back to the active attackers' infrastructure. The droppers tend to be malicious. Nay. You know. Choose a phishing domain. Alright, so choosing the right phishing domain to launch your attack from is essential to ensure that you have this psychological edge over your target. Alright. What is better, using an expired or new domain? Old. What is the term used to describe registering a similar domain with a spelling error, type of squatting? Alright, so the reason you wanna use an old domain is because like they might have whitelisted it already. They would have said like, oh, this, I don't know. Letzroll.com or something is in our, okay, you're allowed to use it, so I'm gonna go ahead and drop it in my whitelist. Well, if that domain expires and then you as a malicious person take it over, well, now you're allowed, now people, now the users are allowed to do things, to go download things or whatever. Type of squatting, very similar. So, you may have seen this mistake before. If you went to like gmail.com but spelled Gmail incorrectly, it might have taken you to an alternate site, as an example. I don't know that gmail probably bought all those sites by now, but I don't know. Alright. Homograph script spoofing. What is this? The A character is created from the Cyrillic small a. 0430, ooh, that's, that is Beritriki, Beritriki versus a standard Latin. Wow, alright. Alright, um, let's see. Yeah, nice. Anything else I might wanna look at? Googles versus Google. Alright. Using MS Office and Phishing. What can Microsoft Office documents contain which, when executed, macros? We learned about that in a previous room in this module. Alright, basically, you receive a document, says it needs macros enabled. You click the thing and then it just starts running programs. We actually get to practice that in one of the previous rooms, Weaponization, I believe, and it's a lot of fun. You use VBA and can hook it up to Metasploit, all kinds of stuff. Well, let's go ahead and collect our coin here for knowing macros. Alright, using browser exploits. Another method for gaining control over a victim's computer would be through browser exploits. Wow, this one is really recent. This is from September of 2021. Let's go take a real quick look at it. Microsoft, MS HTML Remote Code Execution Vulnerability. Released September 7th of 2021. What did it affect? Affects Microsoft Windows. Okay, Microsoft is aware of targeted attacks that attempt to exploit this vulnerability by using specially crafted Microsoft Office documents. An attacker could craft a malicious ActiveX control to be used by a Microsoft Office document that hosts the browser rendering engine. The attacker would then have to convince the user to open a malicious document. Users who accounts were, are configured to have fewer user rights on the system could be less impacted than users who operate with administrative user rights. What are you talking about? Running out of root all the time? That's totally legit, right? No big deal. So, I want us, I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna wait for this Phishing Practical, but I got an idea. Alright. Cool. Enterprise customers manage to update, should select a direct and build, blah, da, yada. Cool. Interesting. There are some workarounds, but this one has to do with ActiveX, so keep that in mind. Alright. So, browser exploits. And it was this CPE. Let's see what this hint had to say. Yeah, okay, CPE, whatever. Collect our coin. Move on to the Phishing Practical. Alright. Very exciting. Let's see. Now that you've learnt what goes into a phishing email campaign, let's see if you're able to spot them. Click the green View Site button to launch the thing. Examine each email, including where it's from, its links and attachments, and decide whether you think the email is safe or not. Wow, I feel like I'm doing one of the security awareness CBTs. Let's see if I fail this test. Alright. Says it comes from Google Support, support@google.com to me. It shows up here from support@google, user blah, da, yada, password reset requested. It has come to our attention that your account may have been accessed by a third party. Please log in and change your password here. Please log in and change your password here. And it says it is myaccount.google-support.com. Uh, I don't know that Google Support is legitimate, because if you take a look at the. Um. The site. It is different than what's on the advertised URL. So we're going to say that's a phishing email. Correct. You're right, this was a phishing email. Click the show issues button below and see the reasons why. Uh, okay. The link actually goes to a different website than advertised. Can't get any easier. All right. Uh, this address. The address these emails usually come from is accounts@thebankinggroup.com. Wait, what's going on here? Oh no, I think it's giving us all the answers. Okay, now, all right, I guess it's, it's giving us a heads up. So. Accounts team, accounts@thebankinggroup.htm. Um, this only has one G instead of two Gs in the accounts team. So this looks like typo squatting to me. Click here. And then you can see down here it goes to shared hosting that THM. This is definitely bad news. The misspelling of the main name, one G instead of two. The main name of the file looks suspicious. All right. Take a look at the email and see if we think it's safe. All right, no reply to hack me support dot THM. No reply at tryhackmesupport.thm. Great, that's me. Keep on hacking. Hello, we haven't seen you for a while. Click here to keep on hacking the try hack we do. HTTPS track me dot com. All right, it looks safe. Correct answer. Why would try hack me? So they're the bad guys. All right. Hello, I've attached the report you've asked for. Please don't show this to anyone. Accounts at try hack me or Acme support, Acme IT support dot THM to me. Acme try hack me support, private report. Uh, so I mean, it's not signed or anything. This says the word test on it. That is definitely gotta be a phishing email. You're right, this was a phishing email show the issues. Don't trust PDF files that are sent out from a trusted source unexpectedly as they could contain malware. I mean, that was a pretty weak explanation, but, uh, hundred percent. Trying to trick me. You can't trick me. Woo woo, we did it. Yay. All right, cool. Uh, so we're going to go ahead and shut this down. I do have something I'm curious about, so. Got some success here. Wow, all right. We had some success. So accounts is the one that sent us something. Somebody hacked it, right? Let's see if that could be us. Can we hack accounts that? Uh, this thing using. Brian. Right? And when we say his password was? Password Brian. Let's go ahead and we'll make a quick note about it. And I don't really care about all those notes. Bonus. So with some bonus stuff. And we said Brian, that's his password. And we want to try going after, uh, Acme support. They did not trust us before. So. Can we try this again? Let us go to. Users and groups. Targets. Sure, we'll see email template. Okay. Sending profile. Let's change our sending profile maybe. Let's see if we can send another one. New profile. Uh, Brian be bad. All right. Uh, cool. Brian at Acme IT support dot THM. Um, what is it? Twelve oh oh five. Cool. Brian. And password. See if that works. Send test email. No, we're not going to send a test email. And we're just going to save the profile. See what happens. Let me just double check this local server thing. That's what I wanted to send. There we go, that's better. All right, so now we'll go to campaign. New campaign. Campaign. Of bad Brian. Email template one, landing page saying thing. Uh. URL, what do we say? URL is going to be. Let's go back to our. Our example here. Easy Go Fish example. All right. Go back to the new campaign. And then HTTP. Ten dot ten dot two, ten dot two, five, two. Change the launch date to two days ago. Okay. I'm going to go with Brian be bad. And we'll send it to targets. We'll send it back to Brian. Yeah, let's go. Let's see what happens. Campaign scheduled for launch. All right, ah, so we got an email. Oh, we got an error from accounts again. They did not trust us. Recipient address rejected, uh, rejected. User unknown in local recipient table. So it still did not expect us. So I'm curious, can I see the, uh? What was the email that I sent? Complete, no. Copy campaign, delete campaign, view results. Brian submitted data. Few details, all right. So he just, he's just always sending data. He's, he's just a bot. He's working from home. Let's see, new message received. Sending profile. So that didn't work. All right, well. We tried. I'm not sure. I wonder. I want to, this is going to be the last one. I am going to change my. My user, my sending profile. And I copy it. Um, and. And I'm going to make it, uh, from accounts. And I'm going to just send another one real quick. Camp three. Sending profile copy and then targets. And it's going to be the last one. Then we'll leave this at a nice crisp forty five minutes. All right, still got an error. Apparently we're not one of the cool guys for accounts at Acme IT support at THM. That was fun. Um. Got ourselves some real practice on using Go Fish. And. Maybe we'll get to go use that social engineering toolkit at some point, so. I think that's it for right now. Let's go back and just check out our dashboard. Got to give some props to, uh. Whoever made this page. Oh, it's just a try hack me. All right. We're getting close. We're getting close to our. Um. Uh, level here, so thankfully. Uh, I get to stay at the level I'm at right now because I, I prefer this room, uh, this ID color. But. We'll have to see what else is going to be on our agenda. Next time, maybe we'll, uh, we'll try something else, but as of right now, we've completed the phishing task, so. Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it.